The following program is sponsored by The Greek. Ely's Radio Shack dealer, 570 Otman Downtown Ely, and brought to you as a public service by Georgetown Media in Ely, Nevada. Regional Planning Commission Meeting, January 20th, 2021.
I guess I should be there?
I get to say more every day. Calling the Regional Planning Commission to order. And Carol, would you read this to the pitch?
Sure. I'd like to read this to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is the first meeting of the year. Now we'll open up a public comment. We're devoted to comment to the general public. If any discussion or those comments actually may be taken upon a matter recently in the age of the agenda, until the matter itself has been specifically included in the agenda.
My name is Rod McKenzie. I'm here because my wife and I, Carol, have an item on the agenda. And I understand she has to not participate on that issue. And so I'm here, if there's questions from anyone about that project, I'd be glad to answer those questions.
Okay, great.
It's a strange looking situation. And so maybe I could give a little history or why we're doing what we're doing.
Okay.
Thank you.
Great, thanks. Any more public comment?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, on your Agenda Item D, you reconsidered the approval of the parcel map for Rodrick and Carol McKenzie. There should be no consideration of this item until they bring the sidewalk located along Highway 318 in compliance with minimum ADA code as well as city and county codes. Again, we either have rules and regulations or we don't. Carol sat down for years on signing commissions and yet without complying with minimum rules. Mr. Chairman, City, Kermit Gutter requirements are being, are not being enforced by the building inspector. Again, he selectively enforcing law under color of law. He's committing malfeasance, misfeasance, and nonfeasance. And he terminated him because he's putting new in jeopardy. This is, this board's been noticed numerous times by myself and yet nothing has been done to date. We either again have rules for everyone or we don't. This board cannot selectively enforce the law, city or county codes. Mr. Chairman, more than once I've reported the new parking lot design of the construction center does not meet minimum ADA requirements. Nothing has been done to date. Mr. Chairman, the new marijuana dispensary purely is not in compliance with ADA. I brought that to your attention. Again, it needs to be addressed. But again, we either have codes or we don't. Some people were stopped in their project and yet here you have a project that's completed and no one's doing anything about that. Mr. Chairman, Keith Carson has installed an RV. I told you he's running that space in a trailer park against code. Do you ever get a special permit to do that? I'll remind you, I got two different allegations for properties that I own and I had to evict my tenants. You're not going to selectively enforce the law, that's discrimination. Also, Keith Carson had a new wire service put on a corner of Otman and Crawford. The meter box is eleven and a half feet from the property line. Boards have put in, you should have put in Kermit Gutter, four feet from the property line. If you look closely, it's inhibiting the, the postal service from the post office blocks. Eleven and a half feet from the property line? That's as bad as Avenue B across from the new Holiday Inn. Again, where's the code enforcement there, Mr. Chairman? Mr. Chairman, I'm asking the past and I'm asking you again. How many discrepancies do I have or deficiencies do I have to bring before you before you do something with that building inspector? You require no permit, no contractor, improper roof on Avenue B at 11?
That's time, Doris.
Okay. Thanks, Ellen. Thank you, Doris.
I'll be back. They need some magic, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Go to Item A. Discussion for possible action, approval of to select a chairman for 2021.
That would be you.
I can't remember.
Well, we just do a motion to approve with that. It's pretty straightforward, just like any other agenda.
Any other nominations or whatever?
I'll go ahead and.
Continuation or?
I move to motion to approve John Jack Ellis as our chairman.
Sure. Okay. And?
Mr. Chairman, you need to speak up. Can't hear you.
Okay. And I guess we go to a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Guess I'm still the chairman. Okay. Discussion for possible action, approval of vice chairman for 2021. And the current is Jason. Any other suggestions? That would be Jason.
And did they know you were swearing in all that? Swearing in the whole chapter. Swearing to, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, already did.
Okay, yeah. And I will go ahead and move to approve Jason back as our vice chairman.
I'll second that.
What'd she say? You gotta speak up.
She nominated Jason as vice chair.
Thank you.
Okay. And it's been moved and seconded to Jason to be vice chairman. All those approving, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Jason remains. Okay. Discussion for possible action. Approval of a home occupation permit. Applicant is Lexi Brown, Ely tumbling and cheer. Is Lexi present?
I don't see her, but from the application, it was for office itself. She does her tumbling and dance in another building. So it's basically to have a home office for the tumbling class.
So basically, they just need a home office next to us.
Right.
I'm confused. Why does she, why does she have to do that?
I actually had the same question.
I feel like this is redundancy and I don't, I don't know why we're even billing her to do this.
Right. I asked Julie with the city about that and she said that they are required to have both.
They're required to have a home office and a, and a?
They're required to have the city business license and the home occupation.
Is it just because there'll be people coming in and out or? I was wondering the same thing. I didn't know you had to be licensed to run an office out of your home.
Well, she has the city business license.
Her situation's unique where she has her, where she operates her tumbling operation, but that specific address cannot receive mail at a physical location. So under the state requirements for her license, she needs a, a building that has a physical address that can receive mail. And so it's basically to satisfy the need for her state business license. She needs the home occupation license.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying that.
Okay. So she's, so she's, she's paying for that for basically mailbox. Is that right?
Yeah, basically just to receive, a place to receive mail.
So I move to, I move to approve the home occupation permit for Lexi Brown, the Elyite? Elite?
Elite.
Elite?
Elite.
Elite. Tumbling and cheer.
I'll second that.
Okay. And it has been moved and seconded for approval of Lexi Brown's tumbling. And all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Passed unanimously. On to Item D. Discussion for possible action, approval of parcel map. Emerge and re-subdivide the parcels. Subject property is one quarter section southeast, section 11, town of 16 North. Range 63 East. General location of properties are 116 North Main Street, APN 016-018-16-006-018-15-006-18-10-006-18-9-006-18-8. In Lund, Nevada. Applicants are Rodrick G. and Carol McKenzie.
I will abstain.
Okay. And so, yeah, fill us in on this. Let us know what you're doing. What's going on here, compliments?
On the block where our home is, that's in my, there's eight lots and blocks. Presently, we own five of those eight lots. When we first moved to Lund, or back to Lund, to be a farmer, we put a house on the same lot that my parents' lot was on. And there was already a little of second dwelling on that same lot. Of course, that was back in the 50s. There was no zoning at that time, so that wasn't a big problem. Eventually, where the little house, we called it the little house, which was close to ours. Our parents sold that to us and we tore it down and that became an addition on our house, mostly the garage. But the thing I realized since zoning took place, with two dwellings on the one lot, we could never sell one without selling the other. That's part of what the zoning is, if that situation existed. Well, there's only one lot out of the eight that we could buy that would be adjacent to us. That lot has changed hands several times, but never would they sell it to us. Had we been able to purchase that lot, half of it could have gone through our house and half of it to our parents' house. That way, we would be back in compliance with the zoning. Finally, years and years went by. We tried to buy that lot and for different reasons, they wouldn't sell it to us. Eventually, the owner that had it said, "I won't sell it to you, but I'll trade it." And he explained what property he would like in mind. Well, it took us about five years. We finally acquired, and that was two lots. We acquired those two lots and he owned not only the lot that we were interested in, but a second lot adjacent to that. So we quickly made that trade. And now, as it stands, I'm not quite sure how to explain it. We have a daughter and her husband are interested in wells. Let me back up for a minute. After my parents died, we purchased from our siblings the, the three lots that our parents owned in that block. So after buying the two lots that we bought, we own in total five of the eight lots. Now, because of where the buildings are, where the homes are, what we're proposing here would give us one lot that was a little under two acres. So that could only have one home on it. And we have the daughter-in-law that wants a third home there. The home that I grew up in, that my parents owned, we called that the rental. We rent that out now. Under this plan, that will still have just a little bit over one acre. The rest of the lots on there will be one lot and that will be, our home will be on that lot. And room for a lot of other things that we have plans to do.
Is it just to meet the requirements of keeping it on one acre? Sorry. Is it just to meet the requirements of keeping each home on one acre?
The two homes that exist would each have an acre or more.
Oh, okay. I got you.
One, one plot would be just shy of two acres. But they're, they have no intention of wanting more than one home on that. So go back in time. These lots were, for the most part, were Crowns and Barnes and buildings. Most of the buildings are gone now. There's still buildings there, but that's.
So you're dividing this up so that you have one dwelling on each lot instead of having two dwellings?
Right.
On one lot. So that's the problem that you run into then. So if you break it down to one dwelling per lot, then you're in compliance.
Right. Our, what our home is on would be big enough for another home to be built on. But that's not our plan. And we have a neighbor that's interested in which they had, then they would purchase that lot. I see a time in the future where we may sell half of that to them. But we will always have more than an acre for our lot, even if we sold them a full acre. We'd still have full acres.
You have options down there.
So as that now, there are three domestic wells, one with, for each home. Any other questions?
So this would basically take those odd little jogs out of property lines that you have here?
Not to create a lot of laws.
Kind of created the jog.
Okay, the jog? Okay. Okay. Any reason for that?
Could I ask you to come over and show me where your home is? Where the other?
Yeah, I was looking at the map.
I'm trying to understand. I don't believe the houses, I'm trying to think. But taking these five lots and creating three of them, right? So I'm understanding that right?
You're up to that down? Down up there?
I think, I think what he's asking, so these are the existing lots, right?
These are?
Lot one, or lot four, lot three, lot two, lot one, and lot eight. And those are the five existing lots you have. Is that correct?
Right.
And so what, your intention here is to create a lot here, a lot here, and then a lot basically here.
Oh, I see.
Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And so your house currently exists where? So it exists right here.
Right there.
So your goal would be to, to separate this out. So is this the rental property?
This is the rental.
Okay.
It's right there.
Okay.
This is the, this sharp of two acres that our sister, sister, our daughter wants to buy and they're going to put a home somewhere in that area. And this little jog here, was that the question? They have a question there. As I look to the future, we're going to grow crops on some of this. And our daughter and them may grow some crops here by pushing this up and making it wider. If we sold that to someone else rather than family, we have a connection here between each other, our daughter and us.
You created access or easement so you can get between the properties?
Okay.
Okay.
Right.
Very good thinking.
So this is still an acre, a little over an acre. Ours is two acres and this is just barely under two acres.
This doesn't, this doesn't impact zoning at all, right? There's no zoning changes here or anything like that. Everything's the same and that's not one. Because it's still zoned under a single family home residence, right?
Of course, I know, based in engineering was the one that created this map. They come and survey for us. We found out where some of our supposed lines weren't quite where they should be. But that's, that's no big issue. We gained a little of some places in lots, in some places, but very little variance on that. One interesting thing to me at least is this, this is pretty close to where our property line, we thought it was. As I sight down the road, everything is down about to here. So I don't know what that's all about.
Yeah. So I'm going to ask the ominous question here about something that somebody in the general public is going to bring up a lot. But at this point in time, you are making some significant changes. Are you guys interested in doing something, at least on the main street, for putting in some curb or gutter or anything in that department?
Now, what was the question?
So the question is, with these changes, and it doesn't sound like you're making any structural changes right now. This is just property line changes. But when it comes time, is that something that you guys are anticipating and planning on doing? Is putting in some curb and gutter to kind of line that street out a little bit? The main street? I think they're called main street, right? The?
The, our house is close to main street.
Yeah, main street. Yeah. Is that something you guys are entertaining? So the, the question, let me, let me re-ask it. With the changes, the property line changes and everything that's, that are occurring, I'm asking an ominous question here is would, are you guys factoring in, are you considering the fact of having to put some curb and gutter down main street with these changes that you guys are making? So curb and gutter on your property line that are, that's, that's doing main street?
Okay. Does this relate back to George's concern with?
Yes.
The thing that we have now?
Yes.
Oh.
Yeah.
Just that's something you guys were thinking about in the near future.
Well, when we, we took out several trees in our front yard next to main street. And after we'd done that, essentially, we needed to put in a fence. Put the fence out to get these big old elm trees out. And we debated, okay, what are we going to put up? Probably my, my thinking was, because we have chain link, quite a few chain link fences in that property, put up a chain link fence. Well, my wife disagreed with that. We ended up putting a wrought iron fence in. And after we got that fence in, I thought, you know, that'd be very hard to repair if someone happened to hit it a little too hard. So that, that's what prompted us to put cement out there to keep somebody from running into our fence. If it ever come to time that we needed to have sidewalks in Lund, which I, in my lifetime, that ain't going to happen.
Yeah.
What we've got there could be made into what George called the compliant sidewalk.
So you did do a concrete in front of your fence? That's good thinking.
Three foot wide.
Most of the people that come to our house or family related, they park on the south side of our house, not the west side where, where the cement is. If it's a, if it was a sidewalk, people would wonder, what are you expecting?
So we're not, we're not saying that. And I think that can be clarified by the, the building inspector and all that stuff. Because we're not suggesting that because of this, these changes. This does not advocate for changes to putting in, to the best of my knowledge, this does not advocate putting in curb and gutter on your property line because of these changes. I'm just bringing this up because I know this is a point of contention and it was brought up in the public meeting. So I just want to make sure that that was something that you guys recognized that we have, we, you know, have thought about and considered this as well. So I.
Yeah. I, I understand this. I grew up out on farmland and with all my friends, we had houses, you know, all together and grew up with each other. But when the city moved out to us, everything changes. And you had to reassess, you know, drawing the property lines and all that. So as far, as far as the curb and gutter, I really, it's Lund. And that's really something I'm not privy to. It'd be an issue to talk to Brad. And I'm sure I would just suggest maybe talking to Brad, not that, making sure everything's good there. But as far as there's anything else, I would go ahead and move to approve the changes.
That a motion to approve?
Yeah. I'd like to throw out. I mean, I, I honestly will say, I appreciate you going through all this work to get things adjusted and corrected based off of the previous history. I think that's something that a lot of people don't do. And so for you to do that, those changes and come through and put all this together, I appreciate that. And I think, I think that goes to say a lot about, you know, you guys trying to stay within your own reason. Do your, do your detail just so. Thank you for that.
And just a note, as far as curb and gutter, that is something that would come into play if there were new construction and if that was an ordinance that required new construction to have curb and gutter. If I am correct on that, Shane?
Shane, I'm not sure if you heard.
And that's on, that's on Lund, right?
At Lund, yes.
Right. It would only have to be?
So it would, it would depend on the county ordinances?
Right.
It's there.
Yep. I, I second her motion.
Okay. Motion to approve from Leah and seconded by Andy. All those in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? It passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I abstain.
No one abstains from Carol. Okay. Next item. Discussion for possible action, approval of parcel map to merge and re-subdivide. Our subject property is one quarter section, southwest one quarter section 20, downtown North. Range 65 East. The general location of the properties are Kelman New Road, North Creek Estates, APN 010-710-20. zero one zero dash seven ten dash twenty-six, APN zero one zero dash seven ten dash twenty-seven, APN zero one zero dash seven ten dash twenty-eight, and APN zero one zero dash seven ten dash twenty-nine. White Plains County, Nevada. Applicants is RWC, nineteen ninety-two family trust, Rodney Connor trustee. Eddie, good evening. Gregory, we're very pleased to last debate, representing Rodney Connor. I, the surveyor, record prepared this map. What we're doing is taking four lots and then creating three. We're moving the parcel lines within the parcel and making only three new lots. A five acre and two ten acre parcels.